Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Councilman Ed Reissinger, Chairman of the Land Use Committee. Welcome you to the hearing on City Council Bill 20-0571. This is a plan unit development at the Village of Cross Keys. The purpose is of revealing the existing development plan for the Village of Cross Keys, plan unit development, and approving a new development plan for the Village of Cross Keys, plan unit development. At this time, I will turn it over to the staff person, Matt Peters. Matt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just going to go quickly through a brief presentation showing some of the controls So, on this first page, you see the controls that you should have on your screen. On the left, you have the microphone control. Please remember to mute yourself whenever you're not speaking. Next to that, you should have the control for your video. We ask that you turn on the video when you're speaking, but otherwise, feel free to leave it off. In the middle is the participants button that will allow you to see the panelists who are participating in the hearing. Next to that, you have the chat function. You can use that to let us know if you're having difficulties with WebEx or any other issues. Next to that is more options, we'll talk about a little bit in a second. And then last is the button to leave the meeting when you're ready to leave. Under more options, you'll find the raise hand button. If you've downloaded the full WebEx application on your computer, this may instead be in the lower right-hand corner instead of under the more options, but most people have it In the upper right-hand corner, you'll have screen view options, you have the presenter's screen, and participants off, presenter's screen, and participants in the line below, or all participants organized in grid. And some best practices for WebEx hearings. Try to find a quiet space with good light and strong Internet connection so you can be seen and heard. Turn on video when you're speaking. Identify yourself before you speak. Mute yourself when you are not speaking. Speak slowly and clearly. Be present, be patient, and wear headphones with a microphone to cut down on background noise if possible. For computer users, we'll be doing public testimony using the raise hand function. We ask that anybody who wishes to testify, use the raise hand button. And when we get to the public testimony portion of the hearing, we will call on you. Each speaker must state their name prior to testifying. For people who've joined through the telephone number, we won't be able to identify you by name, and there is no raise hand function. So each telephone attendee will be unmuted one by one when we get to the public testimony portion of the hearing. You'll hear two beeps when you're unmuted, and if you do not wish to testify, please say so. If you do wish to testify, please state your name and then begin your testimony. If we're not able to hear or understand a caller, we will ask you to call back. Mr. Chair, would you like me to call attendance of the committee members?
Yeah, please call, we'll call. Thanks, Matt.
Okay. Thank you. Committee members, when you hear your name, please respond so that we can record you as present. Chairman Reissinger?
Here.
Here.
Thank you. Vice Chair Sneed?
Here.
Thank you. Councilwoman Clark?
Here.
Thank you. Councilman Costello? He is logged in, but he's away from his computer at the moment. Councilman Dorsey?
Here.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Middleton?
Here.
Thank you. Councilman Stokes is logged in. Councilman Stokes, can you hear us? Councilman Stokes, one more try. And it looks like Councilman Costello is not back at his desk yet, but he is logged in.
Right. That is?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Matt. I did read the purpose of the bill. Just wanted to state that the public notice requirements have been met, and at this time, I'd like to turn it over to the sponsor of the bill, Council Vice President Middleton. Council Vice President Middleton, you there? Okay.
Hello?
Yeah, Councilwoman Middleton, Vice President. You're the sponsor of the bill. You have a few words you want to say?
I'm fine. It's all self-explanatory.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we're going to go to the agency reports. Let's start with the planning staff.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. Eric Tiso for the Planning Commission. This bill was reviewed by the Planning Commission in their meeting of August 20th, where there was a unanimous recommendation for amendment and approval with only one amendment, which is that the three development plan sheets that were introduced with the bill are replaced with updated plan sets, which are dated July 31, 2020. We emailed over PDF copies that the Planning Commission reviewed. Hopefully, you have those in your file. This is a repeal and replacement of the Village of Cross Keys PUD, which was the second PUD ever created in the city in 1972. So it hails from the dim past of plan unit developments at a time where mixed-use developments were rather uncommon in the city, but they have become much more common in the past decades. One of the principal reasons for doing this is that our new zoning code came into effect in 2017, which changes all of the underlying zoning and land use references that underlie the PUD. For that reason, in our transition rules and the new zoning code, it would require that any major changes require a repeal and replacement. That is in part so that the new PUD documents can reflect the new zoning categories, some which have been changed, some which were created out of whole cloth. In this case, the underlying property has a variety of districts, including open space, R6 and R8 residential, R10 residential, C2 commercial, and OR2 office residential. In essence, this will create a new development plan that reflects the updates in the zoning, and it also will enable future development that is new to the development plan, which will include approximately 35,000 square feet of commercial and grocery space to the existing village center, and will add future mixed-use development around the tennis club area, which may include up to 350 dwelling units, and 150,000 square feet of commercial space, and 15,000 square feet of retail space. This will also include new entrance improvements, which are proposed for the main entry from Falls Road. So this will create the possibility for those things to occur in the master development plan, but each of those will need to come back to the Planning Commission separately for final design approval when each of those phases are ready. And there's a little bit more detail in our staff report about the uses and how they're assigned for all of the various parcels that are within the program. So, in essence, what we have is an update to an existing PUD. The vast majority of it is staying exactly the same as it is developed, but the principal effect is that the new development plan will add additional development potential, as I briefed, in the center portion of the PUD. But again, each of those will need to come back for a separate public hearing with the Planning Commission. Mr. Chair, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Eric. You have that. Yeah, Eric, has the -- thank you for your report. Has everyone been notified, the residents that's in Cross Keys, the businesses?
Yes. Notice before the Planning Commission meeting was sent to the Village of Cross Keys community and the Roland Park Civic League, and then, of course, our agenda goes out to nearly 20,000 individual email addresses, just notice of the agenda generally.
Okay, thank you. Does any of my -- any committee members have a question for Eric? No? Okay.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Dorsey, go ahead, you got the floor.
Thank you. Eric, I'm just curious, what is in the plan that can't be done in the -- on the underlying zoning? And what is the rationale for having a PUD here rather than changing the underlying zoning to allow for that to take place?
Sure. So the -- it's a large territory, basically, and there's a mix of different underlying zoning districts. And one of the benefits of a plan unit development is that it allows looking at the development as a whole instead of on a parcel-by-parcel basis. So the convenience in exchange for additional public review and scrutiny is that you don't need to then subdivide and move property boundaries to make sure that new development actually has the exact square footage as long as the whole is satisfied, and that each piece doesn't need to meet the requirements of the exact zoning line. So depending on how it gets developed, they would possibly have to move things around if they were doing it on a parcel-by-parcel basis as opposed to that coherent whole. So in essence, it's looking at it in a more convenient holistic way instead of parcel-by-parcel.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, Councilman Dorsey?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anyone else? Thank you, Eric. BMCA?
The BMCA recommends approval of this bill with the proposed amendment.
Okay, there are amendments from the planning department, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. DOT?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. This is Liam Davis with Baltimore City DOT. We stand by your bill report, which is no objection. Thank you.
Thank you. Law Department?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Elena DePietro from the Law Department. The Law Department could approve the bill for formal legal sufficiency provided that the testimony today of this hearing provides the adequate findings of fact to support the -- for the bill. Right now, I don't think there were -- there were facts set forth in the planning department's report, so we need to rely on testimony today to supply those facts.
Okay, thank you. HCD?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. Stephanie Murdock, Legislative Liaison for the Department of Housing and Community Development. We stand by our report, no objection.
Thank you. BDC?
Good afternoon. Ira Cowler, Baltimore Development Corporation. We stand by our report and support.
Thank you. Public Works?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Martin Collins, representing the Department of Public Works. We're in support of the legislation as proposed to be amended by the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Fire Department, they had no objections. Parking Authority?
Okay, Fire Department's Deputy Chief, ready to fire marshal. We stand by our report, we had no objections.
Okay, thank you. Parking Authority?
Good afternoon. Fran Brunzinski with the Baltimore City Parking Authority. We reviewed the legislation and have no objection.
Thank you. Matt, I just saw where Councilman Stokes is here now.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I think Councilman Stokes.
Okay.
I think Councilman Pinkett has also just joined us.
Okay. I just see Councilman Costello, you here?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Before we go on public testimony, I want to call Ryan Potter, who needs to do the finding of facts. Mr. Potter?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. And I spoke with Mr. DePietro earlier and with Mr. Tiso as well, and we're happy to submit something in writing to supplement our testimony today, but as Mr. Tiso said, the threshold findings, and I'm happy to follow your lead, I don't want to burden the committee's time unduly, but I'm happy to walk through each of them by one, but each of the threshold questions relate to compatibility of the proposed PUD and its uses with the surrounding neighborhood, with the zoning classifications, and no discordance with existing uses. And as Mr. Tiso said, you know, 90-plus percent of what we're up to here already exists. We're preserving the Rouse Company's vision from the early '70s. We're doing essentially, you know, it's modernizing it in very small ways and enhancing it, but clearly, it's compatible because it, in fact, already exists. So, you know, I could walk through each of the criteria about sort of why that is the case. I would sort of follow your lead, and as I said, I'd be happy to supplement with something in writing if more is needed, and maybe Mr. DePietro could give us some guidance about that as well.
I would keep it clean, yeah. Elena?
Yes, I am. Yeah, I was -- when I spoke with -- oh, gosh, I'm blanking on his name, but Ryan. I was with Ryan this morning, or just a few minutes ago. Yeah, we discussed the whole concept of how to establish the findings of facts here, and I said to him that I thought it was appropriate for him to supplement whatever oral testimony he had today with something in writing for the record in case there's any challenges down the road. So it's acceptable to the committee that would be the way to go.
I thank you, Elena. I want to keep it -- I want to keep it clean and legal. Mr. Potter, you just want to go through the finding of facts?
Sure, I'll just run through them quickly if that's okay.
Yes.
And I'll take them one by one. So, the threshold questions. Number one, the use is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. It furthers the purpose of the proposed zoning classifications, and there is no discordance with existing uses. As I said, the surrounding neighborhood and the proposed classifications and the existing uses are already there and built. What we are doing essentially is adding a multifamily building to replace a dilapidated tennis barn and attempting to turn a variety of hard surface parking lots into, you know, more active and engaging uses. So I would submit that on the basis of those facts, we meet the three threshold standards. In addition, the committee is required to find that the establishment and operation of the PUD is not detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare, and is not precluded by other law, including urban renewal plans. I would submit to you that both of those are the case, and in fact, we've discussed public safety, health, welfare with all of our neighbors at great length, as Councilwoman Middleton can attest, and we've been, you know, with full support. So I believe that we have unanimous unanimity on that point, not contrary to the public interest and that the authorization is in harmony with the purposes and intent of the code, and indeed, we are compliant with the requirements of the underlying zoning for these districts. And again, we have sufficient, I think, community testimony that this is in the public interest. And then finally, Mr. Chairman, there are a variety of criteria that are analogous to the conditional use criteria in the city zoning code in Section 13203, which speak to general conformance with the comprehensive master plan for the city and the character of development in the vicinity, the preservation of unique conditions on the site. And again, we believe that we are accommodating all of that, that this is very much in keeping with the character of the Rouse Company's vision that exists today. We are preserving the few unusual, I would say, topographic or natural features, namely, as Mr. Tiso mentioned, there are some open space preservation areas of this site, and we are going to keep those and in fact, enhance those with additional plantings. The physical characteristics of the planned unit development must not adversely affect future development or value, and we believe, in fact, it will be -- will have the opposite effect. We are, to the delight of the residents there, we intend to enhance the entrance features and bring, again, the Rouse Company's vision back to life in a way that is sort of fitting for modern times. The planned unit development may not or must provide the same protection related to fire, health, and other dangers, and frankly, we would defer to the Fire Department's analysis of that, but they've spoken to that and they are in support. The planned unit development should encourage innovative design features or adaptive reuse of structures. We do have some innovative thoughts about pop-up retail that Arsh Murmeran is with us. He could speak to those briefly at some point, but we believe they are new and different concepts that will encourage really local business, not national chains, but actual local business that will employ people in Baltimore, and we think that is an innovative feature of our project. And finally, the planning development must be compatible with other districts and can't conflict with nearby industrial districts. And as much as there are not any significant industrial districts nearby, we think that that is self-evident. So again, I'm happy to elaborate, and I will supplement with something in writing, but hopefully that gives you a flavor.
Okay, thank you. Does any of the committee members have a question for Mr. Potter? No? Okay, thank you, Mr. Potter. Does the developer, the applicant, want to testify?
Hello?
Hello, Mr. Chairman. Hello, Mr. Chairman. Can you see me? You can hear me but not see me?
I can hear you, yes.
Okay. I just wanted to say thank you to all of you on this committee, the City Council, the Planning Department, and also the Cross Keys Maintenance Corporation and the Roland Park Civic League for all of your efforts and support. We know this is a really important project for Baltimore, that's why we took it on, and we promise we will do everything in our power to deliver a successful project to make Cross Keys great for the next 15 years.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you and your team for still investing in the city of Baltimore. It's deeply appreciated. Does any of my colleagues or committee members have any questions for the developer? No? Okay, thank you.
I do.
Yeah, go ahead. You have the floor, Councilwoman. Go ahead.
Thank you. I would just like to know about the retail area that I see on the flats. It's remaining basically the same. It seems to be somewhat enlarged around the edges. What's the game plan for bringing that back to life as part of what's going on with this redevelopment?
Maryam, you want to answer that?
Yes.
Good.
Mr. Chairman, you wanted me to answer that?
Yes.
If you would, just kind of help.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. Thank you for the question, Councilwoman. So one of the important things that we're going to do as part of this redevelopment is to bring a small footprint boutique grocery store into Cross Keys. We are also going to, as Mr. Potter mentioned, we're going to develop this concept we're calling a micro-retail village, which will connect the grocery store into the courtyard, and we are also adding a new elevator that will go from the parking garage and give you direct access into the courtyard. There's a lot of parking down underneath Cross Keys that a lot of people don't know about, and we're just going to try to enhance the visibility and the accessibility. We're also going to update the gatehouse and make it much more inviting. We're going to do that in partnership with the Cross Keys Maintenance Corporation, which is the master HOA. And I think by virtue of having the property back under local hands, a group that understands the history of Cross Keys and the positive attributes of the project, we'll be able to do a lot better job leasing the property and supporting the existing merchants, as well as drawing some exciting new merchants to Cross Keys to make it vibrant, which I'm sure you remember how vibrant it was back in the day. Based on the initial feedback that we've gotten, I feel very, very confident this is not a five- or 10-year plan. I think two years from now, if we have this conversation, Cross Keys will be back to its splendor, and I'm very confident we'll be able to make that happen.
Councilwoman, you good? Councilwoman Clark?
I just wish she could have said by Christmas, but otherwise, yeah, that's very encouraging. It's one of the places I shop all the time, and I don't even know where to go anymore. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman. Any other of my colleagues?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. I too am thrilled to have a local developer who's done a number of projects in our city engaged on this. I'd be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity to point out that the former owner was -- is the current owner of Harbor Place and has just done a terrible job of managing their properties in the city. So this is certainly welcome news and looking forward to what happens at this site. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilmen. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chair?
The members? Yes.
Mr. Chair, I just want to, I guess, finally, just say that the organization has been just so wonderful with all the surrounding community, and they have basically invested that they will continue to work with the community as they're moving forward. This is going to be a big enhancement, not just for Cross Keys, but for that whole surrounding area. The beauty of Cross Keys is that it's -- it -- the beauty of it stretches throughout that whole northern district, so I'm looking forward to the development to start as soon as possible.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I understand, I mean, if there was an issue or a problem, I would have heard from you by now, but I'm glad you supported, and the community supports it, so thank you. Anyone else? Okay, at this time, public testimony, Matt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just as a reminder to anyone who's joining us from the public, if you'd like to testify, please use the raise hand function to let us know. Just a moment for anybody who wants to, to find the button. We don't have any callers. Mr. Chair, it looks like there's no public testimony.
Thank you, Matt. That was easy.
I make a motion to move the bill.
Okay, you beat me to what we got to do to Councilwoman --
The finding of fact.
Second to findings of fact.
Okay, let's go back. Everybody's -- who moved the motion to finding of facts?
Motion to move the finding of facts.
Second.
Okay, moved by Council -- to Council Vice President Middleton, second by Councilwoman Clark. All those who are favored of finding of facts, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, finding of facts is passed. Now we'll want the amendments. Council Vice President?
Motion to move --
That's one, right?
Yes, just one. Yeah, the sheets. Okay, amendment moved by Councilwoman Middleton.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those who favor the amendment, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, amendment's passed. I need a motion to move the bill favorable as amended.
Motion to move the bill favorable as amended.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman -- Council Vice President Middleton, second by Councilwoman Clark. Reissinger votes yes. Sneed?
Yes.
Sneed is a yes. Clark?
Yes.
Clark's a yes. Costello?
Yes.
Costello's a yes. Dorsey?
Yes.
Dorsey's a yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton's a yes. Pinkett?
Yes.
Pinkett's a yes. Councilman Stokes?
Councilman Stokes wrote yes. Councilman Stokes wrote yes in the chat.
Mr. Chair, yes, Councilman Stokes may be having trouble with his microphone, but his...
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Dorsey. Appreciate it. So we have, one, two, three... We have eight yes affirmative. The bill passes as amended, and it will come out on second reader October 5th. This concludes City Council Bill 20-0571. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.